Regular council me for the city of Utica Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Senator Weber, would you lead us, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Terrencey.
Here.
Bacchus.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Devrent.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here. All present, we have a quorum. At this time, we open the floor for public comments for any items listed on the agenda. Anyone that would like to speak to council can go up to the podium. If you are the petitioner for an agenda item, you don't need to come at this point because we'll be calling on you at that time. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address council? As there is no one, I would be looking for a motion to accept all items in consent.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business or correspondence. Under new business tonight, it's our privilege to have our state senator, Mr. Michael Weber, here to give us a Michigan legislative update.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. And I'll try to be brief, you know, given the agenda. But Michael Weber, I do serve as the state senator for District 9, which includes Utica, Sterling Heights, Shelby Township, the greater Rochester area, Troy. And, you know, periodically try to do this, you know, maybe once or twice a year. So hopefully, we'll be back here in the fall-wintertime. But just wanted to do, you know, the, you know, long story short, we're still at odds a little bit on a budget, working on a budget process. And obviously, we have until the end of our fiscal year, September 30th. We're trying to get that budget done, you know, as quickly as we can. But just some highlights for you, you know, to know as you're preparing, you know, we are looking at increases for state, you know, revenue sharing. In the senate version, it's about a 10% increase in statutory revenue sharing and about a 2% increase in the constitutional revenue sharing part. The MML caucus, we've not given up on the idea of like a revenue-sharing trust fund. There is legislation in the House, and there should soon be legislation in the senate on the same thing. In addition, there's been a lot of discussion, and the House did pass the Public Safety and Violence Prevention Trust Fund as well. And so I think that will be part of the budgeting mix later this year. In terms of, you know, local budget priorities, I've been working with Representative Robinson on some budget asks. I mean, to start off, we're, we've been working with your office, Mayor, on trying to make sure that all the money that has been previously budgeted for the city of Utica is getting, you know, getting here. And I think we're kind of turning the corner on that or there on that. But I know there was some, you know, a little bit of back and forth with our office on that. So appreciate you bringing that to our attention so that those dollars can get to the city of Utica. And then I know this year, Rep. Robinson and myself were both advocating, is the right word, $250,000 for new police equipment. So we're working towards that. And again, we'll, we should have an answer on that, obviously, by the end of September for that as well. Terms of road funding, you know, the House did pass a long-term road funding plan, which is about $3.1 billion in new kind of existing revenue. And that's a big part of the budget discussion right now. To give you an idea, though, in terms of like local roads, under the House plan, city of Utica would have an additional $884,000 in terms of money to spend on local roads on a yearly basis. McComb County would see a 109% revenue increase or $90 million in new revenue. The key is with that is not only the $3 billion, which I think everybody kind of agrees that that's like the total number, but then how the money's allocated. And so does it go through that Act 51 formula, or does it go directly more towards local roads? And so I think a lot of us are advocating for it to go to more local roads because with the governor's bonding on roads in 2020, a lot of that money, most of that money went towards MDOT state roads and not necessarily to the local roads. So working through that, and that will be part of that budget discussion over the next few months. But a lot of us are very supportive of seeing new, you know, existing money that's dedicated towards roads in the budget. And the way the House plan did it, I think a lot of us can get behind that in the senate. In terms of the sound wall funding mechanism, again, Rep. Robinson introduced Senate, House Bill 4084, which already passed the House Transportation Committee. And so, again, we've talked about that in the past. This would be a fund that would be set up within MDOT, but then the, from a budget standpoint, we would do appropriations on a yearly basis. But we see it as working kind of similar to a grant program. And I know a lot of the residents along that M59 corridor have been talking with the council and the mayor about that. So we're hoping, we appreciate their support on it, and it's using, you know, their voices to hopefully get our colleagues to understand the importance of the bill. So again, pass the committee. We're hoping for further movement in the House and the senate and kind of go from there. A big thing that we worked on earlier in the year was as it related to the paid sick leave and the tip credit, you know, and of course, with the restaurants here in Utica, in particular, the tip credit and trying to retain that by that mandated court February 21st deadline was important. We came up with a good bipartisan compromise on that that Governor Whitmer signed, which we think kept, hopefully, a lot of these restaurants going. And a lot of the workers who wanted to keep that system in place were very supportive of that. And then lastly, I would just point out, you know, we have a very strong Aerospace and Defense Caucus, which I co-chair, and we played a very small role, but an active role in the new fighter jet squadron mission in Selfridge. And we're very excited for that for McComb County and for the region as well. And so, you know, just to wrap it up, for residents here and at home, for more information, sign up for a month at E-News. You can visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office at 517-373-0994. And I could take any questions if you guys have any questions, but appreciate the opportunity.
Have any questions for Senator Weber? Department heads, anybody?
Thank you.
Senator Weber, we really appreciate you coming. We look forward to the updates.
Awesome. Yeah.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Next on the agenda is the Utica High Homecoming Parade. I got a feeling we've got a couple folks from Utica High School tonight. If you could step up to the podium and give us your names and addresses, please.
My name is Ashley Ritter. I am the parliamentarian for Utica StuCo.
I'm Nicolaina Ancheski. I'm not on the board, but I'm present today to help out with her.
And basically, I think most of you guys know why we're here. We like to use the downtown Utica area for our homecoming parade. Obviously, that happens every year, and we really, really like to, you know, show our school spirit using the downtown Utica area as we are Utica High School. And so we were hoping you guys could help us out with that.
And the date is September 19th?
Yes.
The timing is pretty much the same. I know the route is reversed this year, though. Is that right?
Yes. It is Utica to Jimmy John's down Cass Road.
Yeah, Utica High, instead of starting at Jimmy John's and going to Utica High, you're going the opposite way.
Because Swineheart is under construction, yes.
Got it.
And then the time is 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
I got in a lot of trouble last year on Facebook because I said whatever time your committee told me.
Mm-hmm.
And parents were like, well, no, the school told me this time, that, you know. And I was like, I can only tell you what I, we were told.
Yeah.
So the parade begins at 4:00 PM at Utica High?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As a Utica Chieftain alum, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve Utica High School Student Council to put on the annual Utica High School Chieftain Parade for their homecoming.
All right, motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by O'Donnell. We did jump the gun a little bit. I did want to reach out to Police Chief Kaluzny and Superintendent Diamond to see if they had any comments about police support or DPW support.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For the police department side, for the parade, this is something standard we always cover. That's not going to be an issue. Regarding the game, we've started to reach out to Shelby Township. City Clerk Cook had reached out and got us a contact and stuff. So from our voicemails and talking back and forth, UCS will cover the cost of police for the game, so we just need to finalize that. But that won't be a problem. So we'll be set for the parade, and then for the game, we'll be reaching out to UCS to cover the cost of police services.
Perfect. Superintendent Diamond, any concerns?
I don't have any concerns. Last, this will be my third time here doing it, so everything should be smooth. Work will flow with the police for this, so should be looking forward to it.
Hopefully, we'll have good weather, so Chief, you guys know the blow-up dog that we've been putting out? Have you noticed that?
Yeah.
His name's Chief. So the wind, if it's not too windy, you'll have Chief out in front of City Hall.
Perfect.
All right, any other discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Cassie Heinz Shoes Cancer Foundation 14th Annual Glow Run. Good evening, folks. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Swakowski at 6903 Lanswood Court.
Jennifer DeDon, 4873 Chelsea Court.
We're here today to talk about the 14th Daniel Cassie Heinz Glow Run. I think most of you all know going through what this is. On September 20th, we're going to be doing our Glow Run right at sunset, asking the police to help coordinate shutting down the roads and having them run out from Jimmy John Stadium up through the Riverbends Park and back. We've done this pretty standard for most of the years. It's the same thing as we are doing the past previous years. We're just asking for a quick road closure just for the portion right at sunset, which is about 7:30, and for it to go about at an hour at most, about half the road for maybe like 30 minutes, and for a full road for 30 minutes and half the road for another 30 more, just to ensure the safety of everyone running in for the volume. But that's what we're here today to ask.
Chief?
Yes, so last year, you guys contracted with us for two officers and supervisors, so it would be the same requirement, and we can forward you what that call will be.
Okay, that sounds good.
Any questions from council for these folks?
How many runners do you think you have?
This year, we're hoping to have around 400 runners.
That's great.
It's starting to grow a little bit more every single year. It's starting to pick up, and we're appreciating that now.
So we would be looking for a motion to approve the Cassie Heinz Shoes Cancer Foundation 14th Annual Glow Run on September 20th, subject to coordination with our Utica Police Department.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Deion.
I'll second. I apologize. I thought the mayor pro temp got me.
All right, who made the motion? Let's start over.
Your call. Okay, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Terrencey.
I'll support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony approvals.
Thank you.
We're requesting approval to hold the annual downtown Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on Saturday, December 13th, 2025. Also seeking approval to schedule the annual fireworks show. The fireworks vendor suggests a three-year contract, which will lock down our costs. If you recall, that's the arrangement we had for the past three years. The cost previously was $6,000 a year each year for three years. That cost has gone up. When I asked Mr. Papas from Ace Pyro, you know, why did it go up to $6,800, he said that they're having supply issues, tariff concerns, and the, basically, the cost of the materials have forced him to raise his prices. He suggested that if we don't lock down for three years, that it's likely to go up even more. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the annual downtown Utica Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on Saturday, December 13th, 2025, to include the fireworks show.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And second motion to approve the three-year contract with Ace Pyro for the firework displays for years 2025, 2026, and 2027 at a cost of $6,800 each year.
So moved.
Motion by Terrencey.
Support.
Support by Devrent. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is a temporary sign request for 8413 Hall Road. I believe the petitioner's here tonight. If you could step up and give us your name and address, please, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Nicholas from a slice of from pizzeria 8413 Hall Road in Utica.
Excellent.
I just want to try to apply for the permit for to put the sign outside to give a free slice of pizza to our city in Utica for one month.
So you're asking for the sign for just one month?
One, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to do it two months, that's okay. Sorry, I'm from Canada. It's the first time I have this meeting. I've been here in America three years. I have two locations, one location here, one another location in Warren, the one I was support three weeks ago. I was on TV, too.
I saw you.
Oh, you saw me?
Yep.
Thank you very much. So.
You did really great, too, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm surprised, I'm just a bit stressed here because I've never been.
You're doing great. So we do have a temporary sign ordinance.
All right.
And council does have a copy of it. The ordinance has a limitation of 12 square feet, which your sign is over. It also has requirement of no higher than five feet, right, in the commercial district?
Yeah.
Number of signs, you're only asking for one. So really, the only thing it seems like you're asking for is just a deviation from the size, from the 12 square feet limitation. You just want a bigger sign. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. For 30 days.
If you want to do it two months, no problem for me.
Did you bring a drawing or anything to show?
I have it, Deion, in the car. Do you want to bring it?
I think there was one in the packet.
There's one here.
No, where is, the sign ordinance requires like a site plan showing where you're planning to locate the sign?
Yes, I.
You don't have to get it. I think, do we need this drawing?
I don't believe so. It's going to be right next to his driveway, between the business and the sign, his actual pylon sign. So it'll be more than five feet from the property line, and it won't be in the way of traffic or the site for oncoming traffic from Hall Road, so.
And that's really why we like to see the site plan, to make sure that the sight lines are not affected. So when your patrons are leaving your parking lot, will they be able to see oncoming traffic from Hall Road?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to put it north of your existing pylon sign, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't see any issues with that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Sir, how's business doing for you over there?
I'll be honest.
Please.
It's not like before. I have a hard time. I don't know why. We tried to put some sign outside. I don't know the law here. I asked some people about to put the sign outside. They say, yeah, okay, no problem. I go purchase the sign with $200, $300 I put outside. The business going out. As soon I got complaint from the police, I don't know from somewhere, sometime I'm not in the store, oh, you have to take the sign out, you have to, I say, okay, I take it out, no business. Before I was making good money and I was helped, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be something, but before I was helped a lot of people here in Utica. I shouldn't say those things, but I'm, you tell me now. Now the business not like before, no. Oh, sorry. Now the business is not like before. Before it was, two years ago, it was perfect.
Do you think this will help you?
Yes.
Do you think having this signage in front of the business will help you?
Yes, I'll be honest, I've been in business from 1986. I have a 21 store in Canada, is named Naples Pizza. So I said everything going to come to beautiful country here three years ago. So I tried to open 15 location here in Michigan. But the problem is not enough employee, and I have very hard problem the last almost nine month. I pay every week, every month, I pay from my pocket $6,900 to $7,100 every single month. Why? Because there is not enough employee and there is not honest people like two years ago. I'm sorry, shouldn't say those things, but that's what's happened. But I try when I put the sign out, either I change my sign outside now, it's cost $17,000. When you put any flag outside or any sign outside, the people, they come. Especially now, we have a big special with subs 12 inch by one, you got second one free. And we do free delivery, a lot of things we do. I try to help my city here, but sometime I have a hard time. So I don't know what I have to say.
We understand it. It's probably frustrating for you, the sign ordinance and the rules. We have those rules for a reason.
Yes.
For public safety.
Yeah.
You know, if we had no rules, then all the businesses would all have crazy signs.
Yes, sir.
And your sign would not be noticeable, right? Because everyone would have signs.
Yeah.
So we do it for that reason, to keep our city to look good.
Sure.
And also for public safety reasons. You know, you're right on Hall Road, very high-traffic area. We have to be concerned that everything's going to be safe there, right?
I understand that, sir.
So we definitely want to support you. We want to see you do well. I would make a motion to approve the 3x8 banner at 8413 Hall Road placed north of the pylon sign and east of the driveway for a period of 30 days.
Thank you very much.
I support that.
Motion by Calendrino, support by Terrencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Bacchus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I believe you've already applied for the permit.
Yes, sir.
The city clerk will work with you to tell you when the period of time is.
We can do it tomorrow.
Yeah, we can do that tomorrow over phone.
So do you want me to come here tomorrow, or?
You can probably do it with email or a phone call, right?
Yeah, we can email it to you tomorrow morning, okay?
Okay. So I can post it tomorrow? Sorry about that. I can post tomorrow? Thank you very much. My pleasure.
And I love your shredded pep.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
It's unique, and it really sets you aside from everybody else.
And it's 16% fat. Seriously.
That's good for me, right?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I can get a free slice.
Anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, next on the agenda is department reports. I have nothing tonight. Does anyone else from council have anything they'd like to report? Nope, nothing from planning. Mr. Russo, is he here?
He's going to be here first.
Okay. Just for information for council and the public, we will have a closed session towards the end of the meeting to vote on some assessing items that are listed on the agenda. When we adjourn for closed session, we will come back and there will be a vote for that, those items, if necessary. And we will also be voting or taking a motion to adjourn, and that will be it. So the public is welcome to stay during the closed session. The only votes that will take place will be for any of the assessing items that require a vote and a motion to adjourn. All right, nothing from building, library, Ms. Francis.
I just wanted to mention that we are more than halfway through summer reading, and it is going great, another great year. I would pay tribute to not just everything that's been planned, but also the awesome donations that have come in, just driving people in and keeping them there. So that's kind of nice. And we will have, the end party is going to be on July 28th. That's open to everybody, 6 o'clock, animal show. You don't have to be a summer reader or a kid, Lori. So, and the other thing I did want to mention is the library is going to be going through some extensive landscaping, also starting July 28th. And we're hoping that it's not going to take no more than two weeks, but of course, we don't for sure know 100%. It's going to include the front of our building and both the east and west sides. So hopefully, there's not too much of a disruption there, but much needed and very looking forward to that, so. And I don't know at this point if there's going to be any closure when they go to pour the cement, but that's going to be like a last-minute thing that we're not really going to know, so. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck with the landscaping and the reading party, summer reading party, closing party. Thank you. Chief, we'll sec, report from fire.
We have nothing.
Nothing?
No.
Chief Kaluzny. Chief Kaluzny.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just some quick updates about the department. Starting this Friday, we have a new dispatcher starting, so we're really excited to, to get him on board. He comes with some experience, he's working private security. Really, really excited about bringing him on. Our dispatchers actually, our two that interviewed him are the ones that selected him, so, you know, I can put all the onus on them for, for their decision, but we're excited to have him on. The twenty-first of this month, we have a new police officer starting, so we hate to say this out loud, we're finally gonna be fully staffed once again. So really, really looking forward to him, and, and we'll be bringing him to council next month to, to introduce him, but he comes with some experience, about six years or so over at Richmond, so really looking forward to bringing him on and, and bringing some veteran attributes to the department. For the public, just to let everybody know, July is speed awareness month. It's a national and federal campaign. You'll see a lot more officers out there, there's grant funding to put officers on, on the road to specifically look for and enforce speeding. We're, we're looking to, you know, create safer roadways out there and make sure that everybody's able to get to where they're going in, in a safe manner, and, and everybody, you know, is safe out there. So just be aware out there, slow down, especially in the subdivisions. You got kids riding bikes, kids running around, and unfortunately, in, in this, these hot summer times, people don't pay attention, and they really drive fast. So we're, we're still getting the calls, still getting the complaints in the subdivision, so please be mindful of your neighbors and, and watch out for the kids out there. Other than that, that's, that's all we got for the police department.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have four items this evening for you, the first of which is requesting sale of fixed assets that have met their useful life for the DPW to be sold at auction or scrapped upon the nonavailability to sell. Just trying to clean up the yard. We've been trying to do that since I took over, need to make some room for this stuff that's been sitting there, sometimes hasn't been used since a couple of the guys that are on the job have been around, so just looking to, to clean up and, and get some money coming in for, for a change, so. I can read the list if you want, but you have it in front of you, it's up to you.
I've read it.
Okay.
I read it.
If you have any questions.
No.
I'll just say there's ten items, and they range from a Ford Super Duty truck down to a grease gun. How's that?
An steam cleaner.
Actually, there's eleven, because there's a couple, uh...
Okay, eleven.
Yeah.
And it, they are all listed in the packet. If anyone from the public wants to see the list, the packet is on the city website.
And so I'm looking for a motion for city council to authorize the sale of the aforementioned fixed assets at auction, or if unsold, to permit their disposal as scrap.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Backus. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
You know, Bill, I would just like to say thank you for taking the effort to get rid of all of this stuff that's been laying around for, forever.
Well, I gotta thank the guys, too, because they're the ones, you know, they're the ones selling me, but I appreciate that.
Under your leadership.
Thank you. My second agenda item is from the budget that was approved, so I'm requesting the purchase of a new two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five hundred HD for the Parks Department as approved in budget preparations and finalization. This vehicle will replace our two thousand Ford F-two-fifty and will be acquired through the my deal purchase at municipal pricing at Berger Chevrolet, which offers the standard bumper-to-bumper warranty of three years or thirty-six thousand miles, along with a five-year, hundred-thousand-mile power warrant, warranty, powertrain warranty, forty thousand miles more than typical retail options. Chief Kaluzny got me in touch with Dale Kramer through Berger Chevrolet, that's where we got our Tahos, everything worked well with them, so it's a trusted vendor, and he got us a great price on a, on the Silverado that was sitting in the lot, brand-new, no miles on it, or less than a hundred miles on it, and, and being that it's a two thousand and twenty-four, came under my budget of seventy-five thousand dollars. So the total cost is within budget, includes the western plow and delivery, and additionally, I will be requesting the remaining funds to be allocated for detailing the vehicle with the City of Utica DPW decals from Cook Signs. So the first motion for city council to approve the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five hundred HD from Berger Chevrolet, including western plow and delivery, for seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars from Parks Department Vehicle Purchase, one oh one seven five one nine eight six zero zero zero.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Weaver. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And the second part of that motion is for city council to approve the purchase of the City of Utica DPW decals from Cook Signs for no more than seven hundred dollars from Parks Department Vehicle Purchase, one oh one seven five one nine eight six zero zero zero.
So moved. Motion by Deanne, support by Devrent. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. This will be a, a nice added piece of equipment, a truck, to our fleet, so the guys are very thankful that you are allowing us to purchase this. It's, obviously, it helps throughout the year, not just through parks, but we're very happy, so thank you very much for that. The third item is another allocated item that was approved in budget talks, and the funding was allocated and approved for fiscal year twenty-six for the purchase of a smaller twenty-four-inch bucket for, for our two thousand and twenty-three John Deere three-twenty P Baco, my deal pricing from AIS Construction Equipment, where the Baco was purchased, for two thousand six hundred, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. So I'm looking for a motion for city council to approve the purchase of a new Work Bra HD twenty-four-inch bucket from AIS Construction Equipment for twenty-seven hundred dollars from Street Department Purchase Equipment, one oh one four four one nine eight one zero zero zero.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Devrent. Any discussion from council? Did we get estimates on this?
These are from, they're my deals, so that's the state.
Okay, so this is a my, this is a my deal as well?
Correct. Yes.
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and that also came in under budget as well, so.
Five dollars.
Huh?
Five dollars?
Well, no, no, it was actually three hundred dollars. It was, I budgeted for three thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
We go, we go to the twenty-seven hundred dollars, so we make Phil happy, he wants...
Okay.
That's why it was five dollars more. We gotta keep our treasurer happy and do what he says. The fourth item is, as you're well aware, we, we applied for, the mayor did apply for the local economies micro grant, and we did receive the award. So the City of Utica has been awarded the local economies micro grant. This, this award of eight thousand dollars shall be used for activities and tasks related to the Auburn, Auburn Art Nook project, located on the parcel between Deanna's barber shop and Mr. Miguel's, which includes a mural, a mural, a cement pad, picnic table with umbrella, and bicycle rack. Council approved the acceptance of this grant, subject to being awarded it at the June two thousand and twenty-five council meeting. So this motion I'll be requesting for is for city council to approve the, the acceptance and approval of funding, both revenue and expenditures intended to cover the cost with associated, associated with activities and materials necessary for the successful completion of the Auburn Art Nook project in the amount of eight thousand dollars. Revenue from private source donation, one oh one four four one six seven zero, six seven four zero zero zero, and expenditures, land improvement, one oh one four four one nine seven one zero zero zero, equipment, one oh one four four one nine eight one zero zero zero, and art, one oh one four four one nine seven nine zero zero zero.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support, support by Weaver. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Clarification, this is for the, there was, there's two separate motions?
Yeah, this was for the first motion.
Okay, he just read it off, right? Okay.
No, no, the, the first one was already accepted, so this is now...
Okay.
This is, this is to, the accept and approve the funding.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, so for Deanne and Weaver, got it. Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Backus.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Devrent.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I don't know if you have anything else to say on the project?
Yeah, I didn't even get to tell you.
Oh.
So this is news even for you. I talked to the property owner this afternoon, Mr. Fisher. He was very excited. The artist dropped off a color rendition of the mural, and I had that spread out in, on my, in my office. Mr. Fisher was very happy with it, he's excited. He thinks it's gonna help make things more vibrant and exciting over there. So he signed his agreement.
Right.
I have a meeting later this week with the muralist. He's also very excited, so it looks like it's gonna be a great project.
Think it'll be real nice right there, so.
And since I'm breaking news, Mr. Fisher told me he has a new potential tenant in the, his, the restaurant that was previously the Shvarma, Papa Shvarma, it's an Albanian restaurant. I think it's gonna be a great fit downtown, so we should be getting more news about that soon, too. Anything else tonight?
Uh, just a couple items. We do have our Vector. It was a rough week, the week before July fourth, we had our Vector, our sweeper and the water wheel all went down. The Vector is at a second shop right now, getting a second opinion. The sweeper parts were ordered for cylinders, so Brandon should have those back up and running hopefully by the end of this week. And the water wheel, the pump went, and the, it started leaking at the base, so that's why it's been empty. So that's all been worked on this week, hopefully that'll be up and running. It was a, a threefer, that was a, a, not a, not a great week, so crossing our fingers on the Vector. And what that's gonna be, we did purchase that Vector, that, that second Vector from Ferndale, and we have been using parts on that to keep ours alive, so that, that was a very good purchase for us, so I would have loved to have that be a second one, but to keep our, our one running, it, it has helped out a lot. So we're getting to almost everything but the engine from it right now, so, and the engine is good on ours, so waiting to hear the diagnostics on it, that should have that either tomorrow or Thursday. Pioneer Park, it looks completed, but it's not, there's some punchless items that still need to be taken care of to close out the pavilion, so we're working on that. Service lines begin again July twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth for the replacements. Again, residents who haven't contacted HRC, please do so, so we can get these final ones knocked out. And I'm working with HRC for, our RFPs for our projects that we had talked about during budgets, the PRV, which is our pressure relief valve on Auburn Road, and then our streets.